If we could have roll call, please.
Clark, Fish.
Here.
Hausmann.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Wakefield.
Here.
Mayor Beasley.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We'll proceed to approval of the agenda. We are taking off the fireworks ordinance under Police Report 10A. Does anyone else have any corrections or additions to the agenda? Okay, we have a motion by Wakefield, second by Hausmann, to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to approval of the minutes for July 26, special meeting, August 2, briefing meeting, August 6, regular meeting, and August 13, special meeting. Motion by Hausmann, second by Clark, to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay. No discussion? Alright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Moving on to claims, page 18 through 20. Does anyone have any questions on the claims? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve those. Motion by Parsons, second by Hausmann, to approve the claims. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving on. Alright, we are now moving to visitors and timed items. For anyone in the audience that would like to address the council, you have five minutes. And if you're interested, come up to the lectern and state your name and your address.
My name is Dan Tyree. I live at 209 West Hackberry Street. I'm just here to talk about the council appointment for Ward 1. I know I've sent all you guys letters about my feelings on Spencer being on the council. I think he would make a good addition, and I do think that the citizens spoke during the election when it was a very close tie between Barb Fish and Spencer. So I hope you take that into consideration.
Thanks, Dan.
My name is Tom.
If you push the button, please.
Push the purple button.
There you go. Okay.
My name is Tom Airy. I live at 1609 Locust Avenue. I, too, would like to voice my support of Spencer Schenk for the replacement position in Ward 1. When he was in the running this spring, he impressed me as a person who has energy and the willingness to commit to the responsibilities that go along with being on the Brandon City Council. I still feel this way, and I would like to add my support and hope that he is given the appropriate consideration for filling that position.
Yep. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else to address any other issue for the council tonight? Okay. Hearing none. We're gonna move on to appointment of council replacement for Ward 1. So we do a motion?
Yep. A motion, second, to nominate one of the two candidates.
If I could, I had a question for each of them, if I could. I'm just curious today, both Spencer and Brett, if you can answer it. If someone were to ask you today, would you recommend living in Brandon?
Absolutely. It's been here 13 years.
Thank you.
So, from this seat, it can be very challenging. I'm sure that everyone kinda wonders what happens when you sit on the council and where your mind goes. And, you know, it's really not about what my personal opinion is, or, you know, what my heart tells me to do. The whole point of being in this seat is to do that of which the residents have asked me to do. I've had several residents reach out to me on this topic specifically, and a few of you are here tonight, and I appreciate seeing you here tonight. It was a very split decision from the standpoint of, you know, when I look at emails, just emails alone, not including Facebook messages, or phone calls, or text messages. It was five to one. And, you know, to me, that's not a huge turnout, but it's something. And then tonight, standing at the podium, again, we had a few. And, you know, the role of this seat and the seat that I sit in, it's to try and do the will of the people. And that's really what drives me and holds me accountable, is that we've had appointments in the past, and that necessarily hasn't come been what the appointment was. You know, there's been appointments where there was an overwhelming majority on even a poll by our local newspaper, which was kinda interesting. And that wasn't the way that the council went, which was unfortunate. But we just had an election, and in that election, there was a pretty good turnout, actually, one of the best in history. I think it was even called out as one of the best. So, you know, based on that, at that time, there was one of the candidates that was on the ballot and received a lot of energy from the public. And that person also took the energy to go out and get 50 signatures, to get on that ballot, at least 50. And I did the same when I ran for this position. And that says a lot. It's somebody that's engaged and willing to take that effort. The other aspect of this, and a lot of the feedback that the residents have given, is they're looking for somebody that has expertise in some of the biggest challenges that Brandon has today. And we all know that water is a challenge that we're working through. And in this case, Spencer Schenk happens to be an expert in that field when it comes to streets and underground. So with that, and based on all of the residents' support and the feedback that I received from the residents, and several of those emails were emailed to all the council, and I appreciate the residents taking the time to do that, I would make a motion for Spencer Schenk to fill this position.
We have a motion for Spencer to fill the position. Is there a second?
I just have a few words. And Spencer, like I said the other day, I appreciate your tenacity. You are somebody that really goes after what you want. However, I have a problem with when Chuck asked the question, you hesitated on having people move to Brandon. Brandon is a beautiful community. You know, all of us up here wanna represent to the best of our ability what a beautiful community it is. And that's why, when you, if he would have said yes, maybe it would have changed my mind, I'm not sure. But when you hesitated, I have a problem with that. Even though we have so-called water issues, you know, what we're working through, we had sewer issues that we worked through, we have street issues that we worked through. We can't just be one on one agenda. This is a city of 10,000 people. We have to be for the people, all the people, and not just water. So for that, I can't make a second on it, and I have to go with Brett.
Again, calling for a second on the motion. Hearing no second, the motion dies. We will entertain another motion if there is one.
I'll make a motion for Brett Bastian.
I have a motion for Brett. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second for Brett. I have a motion for Brett from Hausmann, a second from Parsons. Discussion, please.
A quick clarity question. With Mayor Beasley's last day being Wednesday, can we actually do an appointment in his absence?
Yeah, and it's actually not an appointment by the mayor. This is to fill a vacancy, so the appointment motion is by the council.
I'll just make a quick comment, too, on the candidates. I think that they're both stellar candidates, and we're really blessed to have the opportunity to have two really good, solid candidates. For me, it kinda comes down to comparing this to an interview that you're applying for. And I saw Brett just really go to town, making those connections, asking for those opportunities to sit down and visit with the council, and with the staff, and with the department heads. And I just didn't get the feel from Spencer that that passion was there. I reached out to a lot of the group and didn't hear that those contacts were made. With regards to the water, I feel like you're a great, great asset to help Brandon get through the water issue. But the Water Development Committee is really the place where that happens. That's, from my experience, where all of the movement has come from. I haven't seen anything not approved by council that the Water Development Committee has put forward. So I would love to see you get engaged there, where you could make a difference on what you're really passionate about. But you can go, I go every time, and they allow me to engage and participate. I don't know if that's...
It's an open meeting.
Yeah.
So, one of the things that drove me to my decision is doing background checks, not background checks, just looking into people and seeing who they are and understanding them. And transparency is a big thing for me. And Facebook, Snoop, I mean, who doesn't these days, right? You hop on Facebook, you see what's going on with somebody, you see who their friends are. And I did that early on, and it kinda started to bother me a little bit. So I did some digging and asking of people that have been in the community for a while. And there's a connection with Brett Bastian and some of the doctors that formed the organization TB&amp;J. And they're good friends, and that's fine. But at the same point, it's more of the same. And the residents that reached out to me asked several times for change. And that's a big part of it, is we're here to do the job of the residents. And I know, based on the emails that I received, that those emails were also received by the rest of the council. And with that said, I'm not changing my stance. The residents reached out and said the way that the vote should be.
And I've had residents reach out from both sides. So in my case, it was not just one-sided. So that is driving my decision. So do we have more discussion? Alright. Appointing Brett Bastian for Ward 1 council replacement for, let me make this really clear, for eight months. And so if someone does not get the position that they would like, there's another election in April next year. So this is for eight months only. So call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Again, as I stated, that is a position that is only for eight months. Whoever's interested, it will be up again in April and run again. Now, we are going to move on to elect council president. So right now, I am serving, I am the vice president. Blaine was the president. Blaine has resigned because he has moved out of town. Unfortunately, we're going to be accepting the mayor's resignation here in a bit, and so that's why I'm up here at the moment. Sooner I can get out of this role, the better with me. Okay? I forget my Roberts Rules of Order. So Lisa, please keep me, you know, in line. I, you know, it's been a long time since I was a toastmaster. So, anyway, moving on to council president, I'm assuming we need a motion for that. Okay?
And correct me if I'm wrong, we need a motion for the president and vice president?
Currently, we have a vice president.
What? Clark, right. I would make a motion that we appoint Barb to be the council president and Joe to be the vice president.
Now that train running down the track, boy.
Right, where you're at for a while.
Okay. We have a motion for Barb Fish to be the president, and that was by Parsons, a second by Clark, for Joe Hausmann to be vice president. Any discussion?
Barb and I vote then, since we're in it? Okay.
Any discussion? Okay. Again, this is something that's quite unusual. Rarely does the vice president run the meeting. Once in a while, the president does. But, so, pretty unusual. We'll get that mayor in here, and that'll, we'll take care of that issue. Okay. So, let's call the question, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Wakefield abstains. Alright, motion carried.
By our rules of order, you can't abstain unless there's a conflict. So if you have a conflict, you can abstain. By the way, you have to vote yes or no, by our rules.
Okay. So, alright, moving on. It's with a lot of regret that we're accepting Mayor Beasley's resignation tonight. That is on page 21. He has served us for 15 years. Through a lot of tumultuous times. We had the ambulance...
The railroad.
The railroad, the sewer, the water, a lot of tough positions for him to be in. And he is a volunteer. I think sometimes that gets forgotten in the hustle and bustle of our lives. So we wanna thank him for his service. And I guess I will need a motion to accept that.
Please include in your motion the date of August 22, 2018, as indicated in Mayor Beasley's letter of resignation, as his last day.
I just wanna thank the mayor for all his years of service. He has done this city wonderfully, and I'm proud that he's been our mayor.
And I don't know if we've clarified, but he also is a teacher, and tonight, there's open houses. And that is the reason that he's not here, is because he's attending the high school, elementary school, open houses that he needs to for his teaching position.
Regret. We are, we have a motion to accept the resignation of Mayor Larry Beasley after 15 years of dedicated service. That motion was made by Parsons, seconded by Clark. Any more discussion?
So by effectively accepting it on August 22, that locks us out from the ability to create an ordinance to allow this to go to public vote for the replacement. I just wanna make sure that everyone's clear.
And I would tell you that I did ask Mayor Beasley if he was willing to extend his resignation date to allow for that, Mr. Wakefield, and he said he is not. He wanted his resignation to be effective the 22nd, and I explained the process to him.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Beasley, for your years of service, and we'll be seeing him around, hopefully on the golf course, if no place else. Okay. Moving on to, now we have to schedule to replace the mayor.
Well, this is the process we've used in the past for the council vacancies. Accept the resignation, two notices in the paper, deadline of September 10 to submit the expression of interest form, informal meet the candidate form at the September 13 briefing meeting, with an appointment to take place at the regular meeting on September 17. And then that person would serve until May 6.
So yes, again, this is a short-term appointment. Again, in April, there will be an election. That's a citywide election. Anyone can apply to run for that position. It's not based on ward. So anyone that's interested. I do think...
Let me just interject two different things. One is you need to be a resident three months in the city of Brandon to be able to hold the position. And secondly, there's no legal requirement to do the advertisement. It's something that historically, we've done, a publication, to get the word out. And so if the council didn't want to do the publication, we don't have to do the publication, but it's a practice we've been doing. So that's up to you how you wanna run that.
Well, due to a scheduling conflict, I'd actually like to push this back. And so we would appoint the mayor October 1 instead of September 17, because two of us would be gone on the 13th. So my recommendation is, we push this back, we appoint the mayor on October 1.
I would be supportive of that, 'cause I just realized I'm gone on the 13th.
I think we really need to have all the council here when we're making this appointment. Okay? So we can push that back? Do we have to do anything special?
No, you're just supposed to make the appointment as promptly or reasonably as you're able to. So if that's in your discretion, reasonable, that's fine.
Need to do anything?
No, this was just for information, unless you wanted to change it somehow.
You would still meet the candidates on the 13th? Leave the schedule as is, or are we gonna move everything back?
Well, we'll leave the publications the same, and the deadline, we could extend. And then if you wanted to, meet the candidates, I don't have the calendar in front of me. The Thursday briefing meeting prior to the October 1 meeting would be what day?
That would be the 27th.
And then that would be the meet the candidates on September 27?
Could we amend that to the 26th? Can we have a special meeting on the 26th to meet the candidates?
Sure.
I know I'm asking a lot. I apologize.
I just think that it'd be good to have a deadline set, whether it's the proposed deadline or moving that back. I think it's good to have a deadline set, so you can do some background checks and get prepared for your meeting of the candidates' interviews.
Okay, so I'm gonna request, Wednesday, September 26, we meet the candidates, we have the special meeting. And Monday, October 1, we appoint the mayor. If that's okay with everybody.
If you want to, you can formalize that in a motion.
Okay.
And then I would appreciate still having a deadline to express your interests. The form be submitted by whatever date that is, but I think it'd be good to have that.
17th.
Okay. So, alright, so my motion is going to be this. Again, we'll make the deadline September 17 for people to submit expression of interest form, which is from the public. And then Wednesday, September 26, special meeting to meet them at like 6 o'clock. And then Monday, October 1, take action with the appointing of the new mayor. And that's my motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion to change the timeline around a bit, to make sure that all of our council members are here. So the expression of interest form is due by September 17. We will meet the candidates on the 26th at 6:00 p.m. for all those that are interested. And that's just a brief, you tell us why, brief meeting, you tell us why you're interested. We ask some questions, very informal kind of process. And then at our October 1 meeting, we will appoint. And again, that is a council appointment, is a council appointment. So we have a motion on record with, let's see, who made the motion?
I did.
And Brett? Okay. Motion by Hausmann, second by Bastian. For that motion, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, that's our new schedule.
And then I don't think we didn't need a motion, but if you can give direction to the administrative, would you like it published, consistent with our practice?
Moving on to committee assignments under council.
I have a request for this one. I'd like to slide over to the committees that Blaine had, the police and capital projects. And I would voluntarily stay on personnel. So that would leave Brett with streets, and he could choose his second committee as he wanted, 'cause we wouldn't have quorum on any of those, which he probably needs a little time to digest what those are.
What do we do? Did we vote on the previous motion?
Yeah.
No, I mean the schedule.
I thought we did.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. We all said aye. We all aye'd. Vice president is acting as a president, is acting as the mayor tonight. So to the extent, that's gonna need to have you, Ms. Fish, make the change in the appointments. And that's just, you certainly can have the council vote on it, but there may be
oral appointments, so you can have them vote on it and then make the appointment official.
Any discussion on Dana's request for changing committees per council members? Then if not, as acting vice president, I will make that, I don't know what the word is, appointment to those committees. Okay? Okay. Is that all we gotta do?
Well, then Brett needs to be appointed to something.
What would you like?
Then you bounce off of personnel. Which one do you want?
Well, when I had asked about this, since we didn't have quorum, I could stay.
You can, we can have three council members, we can have three council members come to the committee meeting. We've tried to keep with the new, with the three new committees, personnel, finance, and capital projects. We tried to appoint two as the formal group, but a third is, can always show up, 'cause it doesn't constitute a quorum.
So you could show up, but we would make Brett the official? Okay. Okay. Okay, Brett.
Oh, which one?
Personnel.
Oh, okay.
'Cause she wanted capital projects, right?
Oh, you're on capital.
Okay. Okay, Brett. So you are now appointed to streets and personnel. Okay? But you are welcome to attend any other meetings, certainly. Okay? Alright. Welcome to those committees. Moving on to second reading revisions to Chapter 15 of the zoning ordinance. And for those that don't know, planning and zoning has spent hours on this. They've worked really hard on this, in addition to our representative from CCOG and staff. So are we looking for a motion? So we're looking for a motion to approve the second reading of revisions to Chapter 15 zoning ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion from Hausmann, second by Wakefield, to approve the revisions to Chapter 15. Any questions? Any discussion on it? Council member Parsons serves on that group, so he would be the one to answer some questions, or staff.
So just as a heads up to everyone, there was some discussion previously about play set in a backyard, and it was a double frontage. This ordinance takes care of that and fixes that. So you still have to fall within your ease...
Setbacks.
Your setbacks. But this will take care of the issue of having two front yards, basically. So hopefully, that'll be a very welcome change. If you have questions, as always, the city staff knows the exact specifics.
Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor of second reading of ordinance... All right, all in favor of second reading of ordinance 566, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Planning and Zoning will be thrilled to have that over with until they start over again. Okay, page 151 is supplemental budget. We have to move some money around from different categories. We just need a motion for that?
Correct.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion from Clark, second by Hausmann, to approve the changes on the supplemental budget. Any questions on those numbers per staff? This is not an unusual thing. We do this occasionally where we have to transfer money, just like transferring from your savings to your checking. Any questions? Nope? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Christina, you're good to go on that. All right, moving on. Air conditioning. Hey, Zane. Hey, Zane.
Okay, this is the bid we got from Cryer and Blaine to enhance our air conditioning system. As you know, we have issues with that when we have a big wedding and it's hot out. Basically, they recommend adding two units. They call them three-ton split system, one over the dance floor and then one on the other side of the room where the buffet area is. Initially, we were talking about three, but they thought that we could get by with just two. And then if we had to, we could always add another one if we needed it. But, and then below is the, the air curtains. Basically, it's the unit that just goes above the doors. Because that's basically our biggest issue is when we have a wedding, we have the doors constantly opening and closing, and it's impossible to keep the cool air in. So that one is 27, or excuse me, 2400, and that's for the back deck main door, the north door. I guess I would recommend all three doors that we have, the main entrance as well as the door to the dance floor. The reason the dance floor one is important is when we tear the dance floor down, we have to take all the tables out and store them, so that door is constantly opening and closing. So once you open that door to the dance floor, it's, all the cold air again is out. So, and I think that's going to be one of the, one of the things that really helps the most is them air curtains, so. That's what I would propose. But the main entrance also, like when you're down in the pro shop, you can just feel the cool air coming, or excuse me, the warm air coming down, so. You know, the other thing we could do, this is just our first bid here, Kerry doesn't have a wedding until September 22nd. We do have a couple golf outings up top that are going to rent the room and then also a business meeting, but those aren't quite as essential because the doors don't open and close as much. And plus, we're also getting beyond the hot days of summer. So I guess what I could do is, you know, maybe try to rustle up a couple other bids too.
I like that idea.
If that's what the council would want to do, so.
I like the idea of getting another bid or two. I mean, I'm kind of familiar with what two-ton units run, and this seems pretty competitive, but I wouldn't mind taking a peek at just another competitive bid.
Would it make sense to try and install the air curtains first to see how much loss we're seeing and see if that helps enough that we can make an impact?
Well, the thing is, you know, you're not going to be able to get a true test now until, you know what I mean? It's a 90-degree day, and we're kind of past those days, you know? So we won't really know how effective it is until next, next June or July, or so. And you got 250 people, you know, in the room, so.
What's the time limit for install? Like if we were to go out and get a few more bids, what's, like for these guys, Kerry and Blaine, what's the time?
I think they said they can get it done in a couple, two, three days.
Oh, I mean, so you would have to schedule it now and they could get it done next week? Or you can schedule it now and they'd be here in two to three days?
I think it would be like a week out.
Week out, okay. All right, thank you.
Zane, did we have an opportunity to talk to our local contractors about this, like Prairie Sun or-
I definitely could do it.
-Brandon Plumbing and Heating? I'd really like to encourage us to try to do local if we can.
Definitely.
You know, if they have that capability, I'm not sure, but.
I would be supportive, as Dana said, try to get a couple bids, but I wouldn't want to see it take like six months to a year to get them. It took us three months to get this one and the original one.
Right. Yeah, we had issues getting even somebody out there with the company that actually installed the units when the clubhouse was built, so.
And I know it's not hot now, but if we could get a couple other bids and still get all this done this fall, I think that'd be good, so.
I agree.
If you can round them up by next council meeting, that'd be great.
I think so.
Okay, that'd be super. Thanks for doing that, Blaine, for Zane.
Yep.
Anything else for Zane?
I think it's a good idea to keep on the air curtain path too, Zane. So when you're getting other bids, let's not forget about that. I think that-
Yeah, definitely.
-that's a lot of value to it, and especially with those doors. And, you know, those are relatively inexpensive when you look at the cost of their conditioning units, so.
And I agree with that too, Tim. We should do all of this as one package, not just one or the other and piece it together.
Got something about a tractor?
I kind of just found out about this this morning, so.
Yeah, I talked with Kelly Ilers. The council approved the purchase of a 2018 John Deere 4066M tractor at the last meeting. The delivery date for that tractor is 11 months out.
Yeah, and that don't do us much good.
So the gentleman did, the salesman did indicate that he could get a 2016 John Deere 4066R here in about 10 days for the same price. The 4066R, same horsepower, but it's a step up. Yeah.
I think he said there's a six-year warranty on that also.
There's a six-year extended warranty on it as well, instead of a two-year warranty on the new one. So lease, yeah, we could lease it 4 and 1/4% for four years, a lease payment.
Zane, is that what you and Kelly are-
Correct.
-thinking would be the right way to go?
Yeah, Kelly's got seed ordered for the fairways, so we do need a tractor to help with that. We could lease one if we don't buy one, but.
Yeah, that's something that we're going to really start using a lot because we, mother nature wasn't very nice to the golf course this year. We have a lot of, a lot of bear spots that we want to aerify and reseed, so, in our fairways.
I would make a motion that we either, do we need to amend our prior one or start new?
I think just a motion to purchase the 2016 John Deere 4066R for the quote prepared by C&amp;B Operations.
Okay, all of what he just said, I'll make a motion for.
$32,800.
And I would just add one more comment. The other sense of urgency with all this is we've got a big tournament coming up next, is it July?
Correct, the state match play.
So timing on the airifier then, is that pretty quick lead time, too?
I think he said that we could start like the first week of September.
Okay, good, so tractor here on time. And then that lease payment, it's basically a dollar buyout at the end of the lease. Is that how it works? Okay. To be clear, this is a purchase not of a want, it's a purchase of need because our other one can't handle it and is worn out. So the city got its definite dollars out of the last Kubota, so. And then I noticed on here, it said that they're not really interested in trading in that Kubota, so we'll surplus that then? Is that the point?
Yeah, we'll surplus that as soon as the new one comes in.
Kelly told me that they would give us 2,000, I believe, for it. I don't know.
I don't know what the Kubota market's like these days, but we can surplus it out just as easy.
Okay, so we have a motion to purchase a 2016 4066R John Deere for the same dollar amount of $32,800. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you got a new tractor again.
Thank you. Kelly will be happy.
So does that cover the financing, the tractor and the, is that all in there?
No, we'll get the written lease agreement for the next council meeting. We don't have that yet.
Maybe just clarification on, do you want to just borrow the, for the John Deere tractor? Or do you want to look at borrowing for the airfire or pay cash on the airfire? First National Bank can do a 4.48%. Wells Fargo is at 6.15%.
Kelly say on this youth one, John Deere has 4 and 1/4?
Yep.
And we can do John Deere at 4 and 1/4, but that would be for the tractor only.
I'd be fine financing both, but again, if staff has a different recommendation.
Well, that's fine. We'll, we'll get the lease documents ready for the next council meeting.
We have deferred the fireworks to another agenda, so we're going to move past that. Anything else from police chief?
How about anything else, Bill?
Oh, anything else, Golf, sorry. Chuck, you got anything else? Okay, all right. Chief, you're on.
Okay. I've been harassing kids lately, telling them that school starts on Wednesday, reminding them to make sure their backpacks are ready. But I would like to push out that with school starting on Wednesday, we're going to be seeing the flashing lights again in the school zone. So if you can spread that to your family, friends, and others, I'll try to have Christina put that on the Facebook page. And we will have a presence. Our officers will be working that fairly heavily for as long as it takes. Just a reminder, do slow down 15 miles an hour on Split Rock and on Holly and on Sioux while kids are going to school, and on the backside of Brandon Elementary. Also, a lot of people forget that it's not just Holly, it's First Avenue. So that's all I've got. Car is in the process of switching over the Tahoe to the pickup truck, so that started today. And hopefully, we'll be seeing the, the new vehicle out on the street within the next week or so.
Thank you, chief. And can you give an update on the vandalism that happened Saturday night?
The vandalism?
Well, the theft, the stealing.
The car, the larcenies.
Larceny, vandalism, larceny.
Well, they're not the same.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't know my terminology.
They're not the same. We, we have, we have some postings out there, and we don't have the person identified yet, but we are hoping that someone recognizes who this person was. And pretty good video. If anybody else has any video, we would hope that they would turn that in, but we haven't, we haven't gotten that definitive tip yet. I didn't recognize her, my officers didn't recognize her, but we're hoping.
I didn't hear what happened, but I know it's on Facebook, but I don't have any details.
Yeah, we had a number of, I think, six, seven, eight car hopings again. And in, in the video, you can see the lady, the young lady coming up between two vehicles. She checked the one on her left, that one was locked, the one on the right wasn't locked. She went in and, and took some articles. So those were the vehicles that were being entered. Everybody, once again, I have to throw out the reminder that it, it does help if people lock their doors. I was going through some reports yesterday, or today, on car thefts in Sioux Falls. Fortunately, they were all pretty much in Sioux Falls. And a number of them, the cars were unlocked. One person did take the keys out of the ignition and then set it on the driver's seat where it could be easily found. And so it's a simple, simple thing of protecting yourself. And I would, I would also encourage when people pull into the gas station to run in and, and grab a beverage or Coke or a donut in the morning, that they turn off the vehicle, take the keys with them, and go inside. And I don't care if it's town below. That's a, it's a viable target, and even though we're in Brandon, that kind of stuff does happen in, in smaller communities too, it's not just Sioux Falls. So that's my lesson.
All right, anything else under police? Nope. All right. Moving on. Moving on to Park and Rec. The work report is on page 157. Devin and his crew have been busy.
So on this, I noticed that they're mowing vacant lots. Is that something that the city is sending a bill for? Or can you give us an update on that, please?
We do. If we get a complaint for tall grass and weeds, we'll notify the property owner, give them a deadline. If it's not done, we then send the park's crew out to mow it, and then we send a bill to the property owner. And if it remains unpaid, it will be assessed against the property.
Reviewing the work report, I was dismayed to see that there was vandalism at our new Aspen restrooms. And I think that's really unfortunate, and I hope that if anyone knows of who has caused that problem, to report it because it's not a simple matter of just painting over it. You have to do more than that. So it's a pretty expensive facility, brand new, so that was really unfortunate. One thing that the park board talked about was a splash pad RFP. So one of the things that we've been talking about doing for quite some time is looking at putting in a splash pad. I don't know if it would be by the pool or somewhere else. That's why we want to do an RFP to see what companies might come up with for ideas. We think it would be a nice enhancement for, for Brandon. Of course, it's quite expensive, so we would probably have to create an ordinance where we can stockpile some money that's used specifically for capital projects, and it has to be spent within five years. Otherwise, our park budget does not allow us enough flexibility to pay for a splash pad all at one time. So if the council is willing, we would like to put out the RFP, see what comes back. Tammy will be involved with that and our park board committee. So would I need to make a motion for that, Brian? Okay, so I would make a motion that we just put out a RFP for the splash pad. We're not making any commitments at this time. No, go ahead. Okay, so we have a motion by Fish, second by Clark, for splash pad RFP coming out of the Park and Recreation Committee recommendations. Any discussion?
So Barbara, I want to thank you for taking the effort on this. This is something that other residents have reached out to me and asked, and I think it's really good to see this coming through. So, you know, I think it's also really important that at this point, there's no cost, which is great, you know? So we can, you know, get a pulse of what, what the true cost is going to be, and then, you know, look at it. And I did notice in the RFP that it talked a little bit about integrating it into our pool, which is exciting to see the potential there. So I look forward to seeing what everyone has to say. So thank you, Barb, for spearheading that.
Other discussion? All right. So all in favor of putting out a splash pad RFP, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to move ahead with that. Tammy, I'll have, if we can coordinate with John on that, John Jacobson, he's our park board president, I'll talk to you about it. To continue my report on park board, the other thing we talked about, you know, we really want to get a second entrance to Aspen Park. And we keep trying to, you know, look for ideas of how we can do that. And so I just want the council to be made aware that we're still looking at that, if it's feasible. We have some lots up by Highway 11. I don't know if we can pop out on a Highway 11. That's going to be a state issue. So we are still pursuing that. And I think that was the gist. Other than that, we talked about the budget, and one of our committee members will be here Thursday to present the park board budget to you all so that you can ask any questions. Okay? That's all I have for park. Do you have anything? No, okay. All right, moving on to administrative.
The next two items, the city engineer soliciting engineering proposals and- and social media policy. Tammy's still working on the engineering proposal policy. And I've reached out to six communities in South Dakota, our size, ranging from Vermillion, Yankton, here on Mitchell, Spearfish. I'm missing somebody. Anyway, for their social media policies, as well as AE2S, is shipping down some of their proposals. So when we get those, we'll gather them together and present those to the council.
Okay, so what about the city engineer soliciting engineering proposals?
Tammy's still working on the policy. She decided to go fishing last week.
Those two things will circle back on later agenda. All right. Going on to TIF, number four proposal, resolution eight dash 18.
This would create a new TIF district, TIF district number four, which would encompass the south 50 acres of the Roe Bang Industrial Park. This is to help pay for the infrastructure that's being installed, the water, the sewer, the street, et cetera. What this does is freezes the base taxes paid on the parcel. So the county, the city and the school district will get the property taxes they're currently receiving on the parcel. Any increase in property taxes due to the construction of improvements, such as buildings, would then come to the city as the increment. We would then turn around and pay that to the Development Foundation for the costs incurred to install the infrastructure. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
So we're not losing any, we're not out any money?
No, we're not losing anything. And actually, in this instance, it works out very nice. The Development Foundation is borrowing the money, paying for it. So they are assuming the risk if it doesn't cash flow.
I would just add, Barb, just so everybody knows, I'm the Secretary of Treasury for the Development Foundation. But I do plan to vote tonight. Lisa, you can correct me if I'm wrong because there is no personal gain that I have from this.
We've got a motion by Hausmann, second by Bastian, to approve the TIF district number four proposal, discussion. Okay, no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Create some more jobs, Chuck. Committee meeting minutes, you want to handle that, Chuck?
Kind of a recap of what we did at the last meeting. And then I've reached out to Brian and Tammy. Barb, you and I have been attending these committee meetings. We've had a couple. I guess what I'd like to do is sit down with Brian and Tammy and just discuss how we'd like to respond to the committee. So that would be the, hopefully do that at the next meeting, maybe in the next couple of weeks.
Sale of surplus property at 616 South Palmer Drive?
Yep. These are, this is the east lot on the cul-de-sac of Palmer Drive, just north of Aspen. Vacant lot that we acquired a couple of years ago in a settlement. The property owner, Ryan Belaney, at 612 South Palmer, has submitted a bid for $2,500 to purchase the north 20 feet of the property at 616 South Palmer. If the council wants to award that bid or accept that bid, I would make a contingent upon the parcel being incorporated into his current parcel. And the plat has been done for that. Has been done.
I would just add too that Brian's been taking care of the slot for quite some time.
You mean like mowing it?
Yes.
Yeah, both the adjacent property or those two lots, take care of it.
Okay, motion by Wakefield, second by Clark, to accept the bid for 2,500 for the surplus property at 616 South Palmer Drive and the replating into one lot. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to streets. We have the maintenance report. Looks like they have been busy. What's with this? Yeah, he does that to us. Come on up, Rob. Okay. Annual curb and gutter repair project. Is that what you want to talk about next?
That's what I'm here to talk about. We discussed it on Thursday. I was a little unprepared for that. Brian kind of threw me a curveball there. But our original bid for the curb and gutters was $34,889.36 through Dave Didi Construction. That was actually a little bit lower than what he had bid, or excuse me, a little bit higher than what he had bid, roughly $660. My math wasn't so good because Paul kind of left me hanging as the engineer too there. So. It's my turn. So, yeah, that was going to be a little bit higher than what we originally had for the bid. So I just wanted the council to know that it's a little bit, but it's still below our budgeted number. We had $45,000 budgeted for it. So we're plenty below it. And then our sidewalk stuff came in at about roughly $9,000, which we had $30,000 budgeted for. So we should be plenty good there too.
Moving on to stripes. Tammy, you're on.
So Raleigh went out and gave me some measurements on those two roads. Thanks, Raleigh. And adding in a turn lane for sandstone is pretty easy striping. But in order to add another lane onto Holly at that intersection is going to be a little bit more work than just striping. If we put in three lanes 12-foot wide, it does work in there, but it leaves us with shoulders that are less than two feet wide. And I'm not 100% sure what those shoulders are made of as far as base course and how thick the asphalt is right there. So I think it would be taking off part of that shoulder and reconstructing to make those lanes wider and then adding a shoulder on there, which includes some grading work and some reshaping of ditches. With that being said, I think it's going to be over $50,000. So it would be a project that we would have to bid. And I don't have the survey equipment to do it. And we have AutoCAD Lite, so I wouldn't be able to do some of that grading work. So I guess the question to the council is, would you like me to get a proposal to have this work done?
I would say yes.
In the meantime, can we at least stripe? Sandstone?
Sandstone.
So it's, so the striping on sandstone's good to go, no impact.
Right, you can do that.
And then Holly, we just can't do the turn lane because it's not wide enough. Just want to make sure we're clear.
Right.
Perfect.
So I did have a resident from out there reach out to me with a couple of concerns. He was asking for more police presence out there, chief. Now, I know that you have police presence out there because my husband got a warning ticket out there the other night. So you were out there. But he's asking for more police presence. He's not convinced that what we're proposing to do is going to work. The other concern, and again, this is coming from him, do we think our traffic counts were accurate because they were done after Timberline was taken offline? And would that have reduced our traffic counts? I didn't have an answer for him on that. I said I would bring it up. I don't know.
Boy, I don't know.
I don't know.
I really don't think so because they did project a 2% increase and a 4% increase in both those recommendations say to add a turn lane there. So.
Okay, all right. Okay, so you're going to get a proposal?
Yes, I can get a proposal. Do I have the authority to ask another engineering firm for that?
I would think competitive bids or whatever you need to do. Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for the striping of sandstone? Or we can move forward with that?
Staff can do that. That'll work.
So to be clear, we're going to stripe sandstone design on... Okay, very good, thank you.
Moving on to Christmas decorations, Joe's favorite topic.
That's fine. Flavored is flowers, that's right, Lisa. Then decorations.
Looking for at least two council volunteers to help select Christmas decorations for Holly. We purchased them last year for Split Rock. We plan, we've got money budgeted to purchase decorations on Holly. So Dana and Joe? Okay.
On page 186 is the surplus list. We need to declare this stuff surplus?
Declare surplus and then it will go on the Sioux Falls auction in September.
I'll make a motion to declare all five of these that are up there on surplus.
Okay, so we have a motion from, I totally lost where we're at. Who made the motion?
Joe, second by Chuck.
Thank you. Motion by Hausmann, second by Parsons, to put the items on the surplus list as noted on page 186. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, Raleigh, grease trap, okay.
Grease trap inspection. There's really not been any advancement in that yet. We're going to have to come up with a letter to invite the establishments that serve food and maybe their neighbors to come to a meeting to be able to discuss what the city is looking at trying to do. And we'll probably have to work that out with Lisa on some of the wording of that. So I'm not an attorney.
And I think that's a great idea to call in the restaurants in the community to visit what our intention is.
Yeah, just kind of give them a heads up what's going on and, you know, what we're trying to do anyways, so.
Apartments too, or just the...
I think we'll just...
I don't know how to...
I think we'll start with the food serving businesses because in our ordinance book, that kind of hits that area. But the apartments will be something that'll have to be looked at, especially when they have several, you know, like a fourplex, not such a big deal. Eightplex, you're getting a little bit more. You get down to the south part of town where there's 16 or 24 apartments in them buildings. That's probably something that'll have to be looked at too. Oh, we could. Yeah, we could. Yep, we could. Yeah, well, six. Well, just to give you a heads up, I discussed with Tynewell about our pump and motor. And they're recommending that we go to a 3,600 RPM pump and motor, which is a little more accessible, readily available. He said he can typically get that in one to three days. When you go to the 1,800 RPM pump and motor, those are usually available within a week or two. So you're talking about days compared to weeks. So I don't have a problem with the 3,600 RPM option. The only thing I had the question on was the 1,800 RPM motor and pump that were just paid, well, the pump was paid for back in February or March of this year, just replaced. They said that they would warranty what it would cost to replace the shaft on the 1,800 horsepower pump that we just bought, which could be anywhere from $700 to $1,500. And they would credit it towards the replacement cost if we went with the 3,600 RPM pump and motor. So. That is where we stand with that. Horsepower, the 1,800 RPM motor costs $26,317.41. And to repair the pump, they figured was going to cost around $1,500 bucks. The 3,600 RPM motor cost is $14,550, where the pump costs roughly $3,800. So you're looking at $17,000 roughly, $18,000 for the 3,600 RPM pump and motor before they would give us some type of warranty for the repair. Otherwise, you go the other way, excuse me, it'd be roughly $26,000. I would like to go with the 3,600 RPM, just because they're more readily available. Mm-hmm.
So did you check and see if that motor is VFD compatible yet?
It is, yes.
Perfect.
Yep.
So that's something that being VFD allows us to throttle that in the future if we want to take in control of that well so we can slow it down, speed it up when we're trying to do blending. So thank you for checking into that, Raleigh. And based on that information, I would make a motion to move forward purchasing a new well setup pump and motor at 3,600 RPM.
Okay, we've got a motion by Wakefield, second by Hausmann, to purchase this 3,600 RPM motor for well six. Any more discussion? Well setup, what did you say, well setup?
I just want to let you know that the first repairs that were done in March or April were not budgeted, which was a total of a little over $50,000. Now with this breakdown, you're looking at another 20, close to 20,000, I suppose. So that was not budgeted also. So I think we'll be all right in our funds, but that's straining it.
Just a quick question, Raleigh. I know you had mentioned that you were potentially checking with another outfit as well. Did they get back to you?
I was on the phone with them at six, or right before 6 o'clock this afternoon. And they were in Fargo on an emergency, the gentleman that I had talked to to try and get the pricing. They hopefully will have it to me by tomorrow. So at early in the morning, if not yet tonight, so.
So do we need to amend the motion to say not to exceed and allow him to choose the cheaper price?
Yeah, that'll work.
So you said 18, so if we say not to exceed 20,000, that should be sufficient. And then do due diligence and find us the best deal you can? So amend the motion as such?
Okay, whatever Tim just said. Got you, it says 20,000. And Raleigh has discretion on which way to go. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's just parts. Yeah, I was going to say, this is just parts. So you may, you may exceed the 20.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right, got it?
Then just one quick question on that. Is there any spare parts that we should stock? With these being, I know shorter lead time, but we're going to have something that's more consistent. So is a check valve like $500, and we can stock that? I mean, just not necessarily for tonight, but can we think about that? If there's any recommended, I know you don't have a ton of shop space, but just stuff that we can maybe look at?
I did ask about that too. Tynewell went back in their records all the way back to 1998. The pump motor that is in that well is original. So it's been there since 98. The pump itself was replaced... The pump itself was replaced in 2010, in, or, excuse me, 2008, October 17th, November 17th of 2008. So they've been in there for a while. Check valve, we've been replacing that on about every three years. This year, we didn't do our maintenance because of the issues with the water right away, so we kind of held off on doing anything with it. So if we can, if we can continue to do that, that's fine. I think we'll be all right. I can purchase a check valve. They're roughly, a 10-inch check valve, I want to say was like, right, right around 22, 2,600. So I can get one and put it on the shelf, but my problem with that is I don't have the equipment to pull the well. So I'm at the mercy of whoever I can get to come pull the well. So, if you'd like, I can do that, but.
Moving on to Resolution 1018.
As we proceed with well number eight, we are planning to finance that with debt, a bond or a loan of some sort. We will incur some costs prior to that with the testing. What this resolution does, it allows us to reimburse ourselves through that debt issuance for the costs that we incur prior to the issuance of debt. So not to exceed 1.3 million.
Second. Motion by Parsons, second by Clark, to authorize reimbursement for expenditures on well number eight, not to exceed 1.3 million. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then moving on to 1118.
That is the same, same type of resolution for well number nine. As we proceed with that well number nine project, we'll start with testing fairly soon. We would like to reimburse ourselves up to 1.1 million for the construction of well number nine after we issue debt.
So on this one, we're not necessarily spending the 1.1 right now. The only thing that's been suggested is do the testing, and then it just gives us the ability, if we should so choose, to do the well and go through with it all. We've got the ability to make that. So in this case, it makes sense just to do one resolution instead of multiple to try and, you know, so we don't want to do one resolution to reimburse ourselves for the testing. So with that, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 1118.
We have a motion by Wakefield, second by Clark, for reimbursement on well number nine, not to exceed 1.1 million. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Restriction status, and here comes...
How come I get all the good stuff? Uh, water restriction status. Well, update on our water usage over the last seven days. The 13th was at a million. It's dropped consistently up until the 18th, where it was at 716,000. Today, or yesterday, it did go up to 754,000, so I think the people are using conservation pretty well. And I think with the well in place, watching that run, operate, I think we could actually go back to green watering restrictions, or green schedule, whatever you want, however you want to say it, odd even, so. That's my recommendation.
Do you feel more comfortable waiting until the new well or the new pump and motor are in?
I don't think we need to. If, I've got the authority to go ahead and get the other well pump ordered, motor ordered, they should be able to come and put it in within a few days, so. Early enough in the month, uh, week here, we could probably even get it by the end of the month, or end of the week, depending on their schedule.
My gut tells me that we should wait until the new well is up and running, just in case some kind of hiccup happens. I, I had a resident reach out and ask if we had switched, um, switched to green yet, and I, I told him that we hadn't yet, and when he asked if, if everything was back and finished and fixed, I explained that we're on that temporary pump and it's working really well for us, and, and his feedback was, well, let's just wait. So I think the residents would understand if we did hesitate, but, you know, as soon as we can get back to watering, it'd be great. So right now, we're kind of riding the graces of the, the good rain, so, but that's my feedback.
I would recommend and agree with Mr. Wakefield that we should keep it at yellow.
I would agree with that. Yep, I'm good with it. I've just had a few people call and complain, so.
So I guess could we, is there a way that we could authorize the immediate change of green once that's complete, if we make a motion for that? So basically, we would say as soon as the new pump and motor are installed and are working efficiently, and then the city staff can publish it, just so that we don't have to wait another two weeks?
No, well, you know, we've got the, the resolution setting up the, the water and restriction program with the red, green, and yellow designations, so once we meet those criteria, we as staff can make those change, that designated change, and we can certainly wait until after the new pump is in place.
Yeah, because we're already meeting the requirements to trigger it, so we're going to continue to meet it, so just as staff, then as soon as the light switches flipped and everybody's happy, then let er rip.
And there's nothing wrong with making a motion to that effect, and that makes it easy on staff to say that council passed a motion that once staff has determined it's up and running, that it will automatically be switched to, and we'll provide notice. So you can certainly do that if you want to.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that. So I will make a motion that as soon as well six has its permanent pump installed and functioning, staff is authorized to go back to the green stage of watering restrictions.
We got a motion by Wakefield, second by Bastian, to authorize the staff to go back to the green watering schedule once the pump is installed, up and running. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I do want to thank the Water Conservation Committee and the Water Development Committee for your efforts. I think that you're getting the message out has really helped, and we'll just continue to keep getting that message out, but to drop down to 700-some thousand gallons is great, so. And Raleigh's staff and the chief's staff for enforcement, too. All right, do we have anything else to come before the council?
Um, I would just update the council that I would expect to get drafts of the new administrative ordinances to you this week, probably tomorrow or Wednesday morning. There had been some discussion on whether, as, whether the city wanted to have an ordinance on a special election. Our process has been to not have a special election when there's a vacancy. We can certainly, I, I haven't added that. I can certainly add that if that's what the council wants me to do in terms of proposing an ordinance within those administrative rules. I had reached out to various city attorneys to get their feedback on special elections. Everything I received back was very negative in terms of timing, in terms of the publication requirements. It effectively eliminates about five months of the year for special elections because of when a regular election is. It, it works fine when the vacancy is going to be out there for 10 months, that you have somebody in place, but there was an AG Attorney General's decision out in 2006 that really made it clear that it takes about five months out of that process, that special elections just are not effective, and you can't even do them. So that's number one. And the feedback also was that you're really dealing with a finite amount of time, and relative to candidates getting out their platforms and getting the public informed and the media involved, you're really not able to do that very well with a special election, was the second feedback I received. The, the third feedback was you, you don't get very many people coming out to the special election for a very short amount of vacancy filling. And then the, the final feedback that I received from city attorneys that have looked at this issue is really in, in the short amount of time that you're trying to fill that position for a mayor, oftentimes, in terms of transparency, you're able to address that with having people come before the council and, and kind of state what their plans are or their rationale are. The city council members are the ones who know what issues are really coming up in the next few months, because sometimes you're talking about an appointment as the mayor for two or three months, and it's more of the, if you remember, the administrative CEO signing documents, fulfilling the requirements of what the ordinances are, because you set the ordinances, and so oftentimes, it's the council that makes the appointment knows what is coming up and what experience is needed for a very short amount of time, and trying to vet that out with candidates that are coming in before them. And so I didn't receive any comments from city attorneys that really supported the special election, just because it's such a small amount of time, but if it is something that you want me to, as a council draft within the administrative ordinances, I certainly can do that. I haven't done that, but that is something that, you know, we can do otherwise, and it, nothing has to be decided tonight. I'm just throwing it out there because we're not going to be able to use it anyway right now with this mayoral vacancy, but that's kind of the feedback I received on special elections, so I, I won't be, unless otherwise instructed by a majority of the council, proposing that within the administrative ordinances that I'm going to send to you. So I just wanted to update you on that, and then I have an executive session I need, but if you have any questions about that first, I'm certainly happy to...
So just real quick on, on the special election, is it a tool that we could have where it could go either way, so appointment or special election? So right now, we do not have the ability for a special election, so if we were to put in that into our ordinances, we could do a special election or an appointment? Or is it very clear that once you put in the ordinances, it has to be a special election?
It has to be a special election unless you're dealing with the period of time that you can't, you know, the five months before the normal election in April, so you can't even use that process. And so you could have it in place, but it's really only dealing with seven-month period of time that you can have it there. So you, you can have it there, but you can only use it effectively about seven months of the time. I was one of the people that inquired about the process in general, just being new, just to staff, and after understanding more of the time restrictions with putting out the publication and the notices and the ordinances, and, and then the time to actually have the election, and not to mention the expense that would have to be incurred to have the election as well for such a short period of time, I, I would, I would not be in favor of doing that.
I would echo those comments. I would not be in favor of it.
Nor would I.
Nor would I.
Okay, well, hearing, I don't have a majority, and it's not something you can't otherwise bring up later as well. I won't have included in my draft that provision, and it's something we can certainly talk about when we're looking through the ordinances again. And then I have nothing further before I ask for an executive, so I don't want there's any other business. If you want to take care of that first, and then I'll make a motion, or not make a motion, but I'll ask for executive session for certain reasons. I'll ask somebody to make a motion.
Or any other business come before the council? So we need to adjourn and go into executive session?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to go into executive session. For, it would be litigation, potential litigation and personnel. Potential litigation and personnel.
Okay. All those in favor of going into executive session for potential litigation and personnel?
And litigation.
Litigation.
Litigation, potential litigation and personnel.
Oh, litigation, potential litigation and personnel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?